Okay, I need sound.
They all muted.
I need that paper. Okay.
Streaming live on YouTube. Okay, I should be able
Totally even there.
We still have.
Yeah, you're unmuted now. You, you, you got
Yep. Okay, welcome everyone. It's scheduled board supervisors meeting and I'd like to start it as always with the pledge of allegiance, please.
Yeah, I turned it down so it shouldn't be.
And Donna, you're, you're with us?
I'm with you, ready to roll.
Okay, great. What we all do then is, is try to get to the ordinance two, two thirty December amended amendment to chapter twenty seven. We do have a couple of simple items on there. We have minutes from July twenty second, twenty twenty. And I know that Joe, you, you had them out for all of us, I think yesterday or so. I took a look at them and you what, Robert, you see them?
Yeah.
And Jacob?
They look good to me.
Can I have a motion then, please?
I'll make a motion that we approve the July twenty second work session minutes.
Right to second that motion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now, in our public hearing this evening is, is a public hearing. Donna Kenderline is our court synographer. She'll be recording me, the hearing itself. So I would say that if you're going to be involved, Ron, correct me if I'm wrong, as a participant, you really should identify yourself and be at least logged in for this particular event. I don't know how we're gonna
Just play it by ear. I mean, obviously people have a right to comment about what's occurring. That's the whole
Yep, that's why we're here.
Point of the public hearing is basically a public meeting that advises the public of what the board is planning to adopt or do. So hopefully we'll be able to get some through Zoom or however it works. We'll go from there.
Well, we have no choice right now. Okay, so having said that, it is now seven oh four and I move that we open up this public hearing. Donna, we officially opened the public hearing at seven oh four. Ron, can I just defer to you then for the intro and
Give me a moment here. I'm seeing what they have given me here.
Ron, you're not very clear.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, that was better.
Better? I'll just talk louder.
Okay.
Just give me a moment here. I'm going through. So let's make part of the record, although you don't have them in front of you, what have you marked them virtually? The ads that were in the Pocono record once a week for two successive weeks with respect to the township notice. And then the ad that was in once under the township solicitor name. We also have, so let's make that, the notice under the township address as, are we doing board one or township one, Donna?
Um, I think we generally do board.
Board one? All right, so let's make that board one, which is the notice that's under the name of the township. And then again, I'll send these to you and before board two, we're gonna make the notice that was sent under my name with respect to the advertisement. And we also have the advertisement attached to each of those notices. We also have the affidavit of posting signed by Mr. Wolf, the zoning officer. So we'll make that be three. Also attached to that is a listing of property owners in the zone. We received notice of the hearing. And that's a seven page document with notices, posting notices from July seven through July fifteen and we'll make that word exhibit number four. And I believe attached to the ordinance, I think, is the new zoning map. If not, that zoning map has to be copied and attached to the record and we'll make that a board exhibit number five. I would ask that those exhibits be made part of the record with respect to this particular matter. And I see there are people here in the audience. If anyone has any objections, let us know. If not, that's what we'll do. And I have an eight and a half by eleven inch colored map though with respect to the new uh, zone. So we'll make that, I'll mark this here as B dash five. And that map was prepared for the township by the Monroe County Planning Commission dated February of two thousand and twenty. Okay. So there are people here in the audience. If anyone has any objections to any of those exhibits, please say something now. If not, we're gonna consider that part of the record with respect to this particular matter. All right, so introductions are very simple. This is a zoning ordinance. It's an amendment to the present zoning ordinance. And as noted in the advertisements before you, these amendments are going to repeal completely the C one commercial zone, the B one planned boulevard zone, and the B two business and professional office medical zoning district. They will now be repealed and deleted and they will all become part of the ED, the Economic Development Zoning District. The Economic Zoning Development District establishes new commercial districts intended to encourage diverse number of compatible non-residential uses along the high volume traffic corridors, promoting flexible design options to encourage well-designed and non-residential land uses in accordance with the goals of the township comprehensive plans. Residential uses will not be permitted in this zone except if it's part of a mixed use development. And the township believes that the section three oh six, the incentivized development option will allow greater flexibility of development alternatives and to encourage the development of underutilized properties within the township. And the applicability of that section three oh six zone will consist of a minimum of two uses are various design standards, including site design standards, yard setbacks, maximum occupiers coverage, all street parking requirements, building height limits, trash enclosures, landscaping requirements, lighting requirements, various principal uses permitted, accessory uses, conditional uses with development standards, also deals with stables and kennels and senior housing, also retirement housing community standards and additional development standards such as maximum building coverage and all street parking standards off and on loading docks and similar items along with adding some additional words that are not in the present zoning ordinance, including the mixed use building, a no impact home based business, quality, retirement housing community, and redevelopment facility along with the minimal home occupations along with the repeal, sorry, of the minimal home occupations and minimal or minor impact use. So it is a comprehensive zoning change that hopefully will assist in causing development, better development and more tuned development to as it says here, the heavy heavily traveled square roads like SR two oh nine. So that being said, this is a time for a public comment. Hopefully you have read the ordinance and you have the ability to ask questions based upon your reading of the ordinance. It will become, it will take some time if you're asking the supervisors, what does this section mean or that section mean? But it's all part of this hearing. So if anyone has any comments, please state your name and your resident under the open space meeting open records, open space, open records meeting law. It indicates that generally people who are residents of the township or who are taxpayers of the township are entitled to offer public comment. Other people who are not residents or not taxpayers generally are not. However, my experience with this board is that it always attempts to be transparent and responsive so that even if you are not a township resident or a taxpayer and do not abuse the privilege, I think this board would allow you.
Ron, can I just
That's about all I have to say right now.
Okay, I just a couple of words on this. This process started maybe over three years ago at least. You cannot hear me? Okay, I say this this project started well over three years ago. And it's truly the byproduct of a lot of volunteers, Pining Commission members, board of supervisor members, the public. And what happened was that we felt that we could take these three zones and make them much better, much more practical, much more common sense for, for the entire community. Know this, that I don't know how many meetings, but literally dozens of meetings that come to this conclusion. It's something that was not done overnight. We engaged services of two planners who helped us immensely as we moved forward through this. And, and finally, here we are this evening to hopefully bring this to fruition. Three pack one.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Did you mind speaking up? If you could walk up
Did you mind speaking up, if you could walk up probably just a couple of feet and speak up so the sonologist can hear you?
My name is Pat Sylvester, and I live on Kring. Um, I'm just hearing a lot of numbers and objects and everything.
I'm, I still can't hear.
Yeah, this is, uh.
Okay, okay, I can, that might be better. Yep.
Do I have to say that again?
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, sorry.
Okay, my name is Pat Sylvester, and I live at Tree Lane. And, um, all I heard tonight was a repeat of the letter that we got in the mail. I'm wondering if any of these ordinances are gonna affect our residential properties.
Well, excellent question, number one, as we said, it's gonna be three, three zones. Or, or C-one, B-one, and B-two, and that's all, residential is gonna remain as it is with all the protections that we have. Uh, what will happen is, is we're hoping that in this new zone, economic development zone. We'll be able to offer good, gainful, sustaining employment to the right kind of people to commit and include their projects, not in an R-one zone.
Okay, because, um, I went through the zoning thing before when they put that big medical center on one seventy-nine. Four forty-seven. And now I have a three-room circus in my backyard with all the bright lights. If they're gonna design something like that, why can't they use a. Lighting that's not so bright?
Uh, that's part of, that will be, and is in the ordinance. And, uh, the term for that is overflow, flow of lighting.
Yes.
Uh, you talking about a coordinated health building, one of the coordinated?
Uh, the one up from that, uh, one seventy-nine, uh, the one they just built a couple of years ago.
Okay. Again, uh, there are, there are requirements that they have to, they have to adhere to. And I would suggest that if you'd like, I'll, I'll make a note of this, and we'll, we'll take that under consideration and talk to these people.
In the summertime, it's not bad, because the tree line grows up, but in the wintertime. Like they're having a party down there.
And, and, uh, what I'll do then is, is we'll get your information, contact information. And we'll definitely, we'll get in touch with that facility.
Okay, great, now, uh, the residential properties, you're not changing them to commercial or anything like that?
Brian, next to some?
Right.
So.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I have no idea who's speaking.
So don't inform residential, that will not be, as long as you want to stay residential.
Yes.
Now, you always have the option, if you wanna change the residential to commercial, since you're gonna be in the EDs, I'm gonna be able to do that. But as long as you wanna be residential, that sets up you.
No, my taxes are higher than that.
And, amen, I bet, that was Ken Wolf, okay?
Okay.
Oh, thank you.
Those lights are not supposed to spill onto residential properties, perhaps we could take a look at.
Yeah, it's, you know, if you're sitting out in the porch or something, whatever.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. Yes, sir.
Don Clew.
Don, come on up.
I live on Mount Tom Road.
I know exactly where the.
You do? Yeah, you was there. And, uh, my question is similar to hers there, uh, with, with, uh. Any businesses or whatever's going across the street there, are we gonna have any kind of protection like that? From lighting and this and that and stuff? I know when the Chinese restaurant was over there and stuff, my house was lit up like Christmas tree there.
Well, I, I do know where the, the Chinese restaurant is. I didn't know that that was a problem, and as you know, I've been over your way.
Yeah.
A few times. Uh, now, what's going on across the road, are you, are you talking about the old motel area?
No, I'm talking about the Chinese restaurant area in there.
Across from this?
Yeah.
Not across from.
Right next to Bruce's there.
Yeah.
In there.
Right.
And the lights are spilling on.
No, not now, there's nobody in there, it's empty, but we had that problem before. And then there was a lot, a lot of noise and everything from the restaurant when they had the Latin night and everything else, and. Plus, it'd be any kind of a fencing or any kind of a barrier put up there, so we don't have to.
Well, certainly that could be considered. Again, we're talking about which, which Chinese restaurant is this?
Uh, the one called Brownum's. Happy Days.
Yeah. Not Happy Day, one of them.
Okay, that, I don't know that that was a, like, excuse me, a Chinese restaurant, I didn't think it was, but that has nothing to do with the situation. Uh, that restaurant, as, as far as I know, our zoning officer may know more, is, is, is no longer in business.
That's correct, no, it's been closed a couple of years.
Well, it's been closed long enough, so that if he wants to reopen it, he'll be in here sitting, talking to us, and you'll be sitting right there. Telling what you feel and what you would like to see done.
Because I know at one time, he had an offer to put a used car lot in there, and the zoning wouldn't let him do it. Now, if something like that happens, then. Who wants to look at that crap?
No.
We went in this new ED zone, anything to do with automotive, uh. Car repair, uh, sales, at least is a conditional use. So they will have to come in and see the board supervisors, and the supervisor can put conditions on the property if they're able to do it. So there is protection there also.
And, and we can, with, with, with the guidance of our professionals, our engineer and our, and our solicitor. Uh, we, we, as long as we're reasonable, we, we can control those kind of matters, especially this spillage, that, that was important.
Let, let me, if you, if I may, Mr. Chair, uh, just refer to the ordinance, uh, that is being adopted, and I'm looking at page six, and. Just answer some of the questions here, there's a section G, like in George for landscaping. And subsection four says landscape buffers shall be required along property boundaries. Which are adjacent to residential uses and/or residential districts. Plant material shall be at least six feet in height when planted, and shall include a mix of various trees. The plantings must be maintained permanently, and any plant material which does not live within six months must be replaced. As to lighting, lighting is designed that the full fixtures and ornamental units are of a pedestrian nature. Heights shall be between eight and twenty feet, with shorter poles along sidewalks. Light trespass onto adjacent non-commercial areas shall not exceed zero point one foot candles in intensity. And I would refer to our engineer to see if he could describe for you what is zero point one foot candles in intensity, because. I can't tell you that one looks pretty small. And that building lighting shall be entered properly, and then finally. Any applicant may submit a land development plan for approval under this ordinance. But they must comply with all the requirements of the incentivized development option. So that means that if they're gonna come in with a plan, or with a business, they have to come in with a plan and say, this is what we're gonna build. This is how big it's going to be, this is where it's gonna look, this is what we're gonna do with soil erosion. This is how we're gonna take care of landscaping, this is how we're gonna take care of soil erosion. So all of those requirements continue to apply with respect to the ordinance. John, with respect to the zero point one foot candles, any, any way you can sort of put some meat on that bone?
It's pretty hard, uh, if you were in a totally dark environment and had. One ten-to-the-foot candle, it would probably give you enough light that you could see to walk, but. It certainly has no glare, it's not, I don't even think it'd be bright enough to read by.
Like, yeah.
That, that would be a pretty good example.
That's the most they can do, and if they're in violation, then you come to the township and you complain, and the township. Officials will check it out, and if they are in violation, they will not have to then answer.
And as Ron said, uh, if they're, if it's a new enterprise, they'll, they'll have to abide by these same standards.
And anything that's going in there will be posted ahead of time as to what they wanna do?
For a public meeting, uh, yes, not posted quite the way we had it posted, uh. This particular revision to the ordinance, but yeah.
Okay, at a public meeting, not in a paper or anything like that, just?
What, we, we have, uh, we have excellent, uh, we have excellent sites that we post to, our own, SmithfieldTownship.com. And Jacob, we, we also on YouTube, I believe, and.
Right, so there'll be publicly accessible meetings, and, uh, they'll be duly advertised as, as normal. Um, the agendas will be publicized ahead of time, and, uh, public comment will be taken.
So there won't be a special notice, you just have to be aware that. The township meets twice a month with supervisors, and sometime every Wednesday for a workshop. And plans come in for their review. Those plans are subject to public review and approval, not approval, subject to review and inspection. But you just have to keep an eye on what plans are coming in, and you can certainly call the township, uh. Office once a month and say, are any new plans coming in for this area or whatever, they'll tell you, and if so, then. Check on the website and you'll know what meeting date that will be.
Correct? And, and you know.
He said John Clew, C-L-E-W-P-L-L.
And, okay, computers are pretty stupid, but, yeah, website, you get on, on Smithfield Township site and.
Yeah, on SmithfieldTownship.com, it'll have that, and we'll be launching a newer, easier-to-use site that, that'll make it, feature it more prominently. But you'll see that there, and, and it will be posted to the, the Facebook also.
Okay. But I can't figure out, I'll tell my wife, she.
Yep, feel free to give us a call, and we'll, we'll always set you up.
John, you're not a good person, so.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Uh, yes, sir.
Doug Schreiber, citizen and taxpayer. I just had a question about drug and alcohol rehab. I know that that has been included as a conditional use, I believe, in our new ED zone, correct?
No, it's a permitted use.
It's a permitted use, okay, thank you. I wanted to just get it clear as to what type of use it was, and the question I have for that was. Is there a minimum lot size? Because in another matter, in another context, I should say, there has been discussion about, uh, limiting the. The minimum-sized property for a drug and alcohol rehab center to twenty-five acres, it sounds like a lot. But is there any kind of minimum requirement in the ordinance at this point?
It's, uh, Ron, I, I.
Yeah, I, I don't think so, I mean, there's impervious coverage, I wish, you know, impervious coverage and things, but. I, I don't think there's a, a minimum lot size, but as Mr. Schreiber and you are talking, I'll keep looking, but I don't recall. Uh, seeing that here.
Okay, well, I, I just admit that there should, in my opinion, there should be.
Why?
Okay.
Why?
Ron, yes, why is this different than any other?
Aesthetic reasons?
Than any other facility that's therapeutic or medical or, or rehabilitated?
That, that's, that's your, you know, that's a good question. My question, my point was simply that since it arose in another context. Perhaps it could be considered, because there's still plenty of properties along the corridors that are twenty-five acres or larger. There are large pieces of property that could be converted. And for every, I mean, all the, we've done a lot of research. And looked at a lot of comparable, uh, drug and alcohol rehabilitation centers. And frequently, they are on fairly sizable pieces of land. Hence the argument for water gap, as, in terms of its size, its distance from population centers, that sort of thing. I mean, it's just that the good ones do tend to be on, on. Relatively isolated.
And that would be who, I don't wanna interrupt, but, but actually, that would be who the person or the entity that wants to establish one. Uh, and, and hopefully, that would come into play, but the standards really, we'd be looking at are setbacks, height. Parking.
Right.
Uh, and, and then look into the type of facility and just go to a zoning officer and shout out, how many parking spaces are going to be required? Uh, so in that respect, egress and ingress.
Right.
So, uh, in itself, uh, it's not, no, we did not in this, in this CD.
Okay, so I just wanna go on the record saying that I think there's.
Well, I, I think in certain circumstances, you're probably right, depending what kind of facility it is. We've moved that to have some kind of a gap that's surrounded.
Yeah, and, and I, I agree, and there also should be, also, there should be.
But just for example, to talk about Delaware Water Gap, there's another, uh, rehabilitation, drug and alcohol rehabilitation. House operating right on Broad Street, Delaware Water Gap, you know where the, uh, the barbecue is?
Yes.
You know where bakery is, the barbecue?
Yes, sure.
It's right in front of the barbecue, no one has ever objected, and no one ever knows.
Is that a rehab place or halfway up?
I think it's, it's a drug and alcohol, uh, I'm not sure it's halfway or a quarter way or whatever it is, but. It's, it's where people come to, to, uh.
To go. Not retreat.
Hold on, one person at a time.
The only, the only other thing I would suggest to become a part of the ordinance, in regards to just this one issue. Is that there be a requirement for certification from the, so, one or more of the bodies that certify that particular type of operation.
That's a good point, and by the way.
That's, that's, it's a given, number one, you can't, you, you must be certified, you must be licensed. And as you know, it's the Department of Health, Department of Labor, uh, I think Department of Welfare, there's a whole.
Okay.
Whole, uh, group of, uh, agencies out of Harrisburg, they get more with that, and us, so that's.
And as you know, you and I, we've all had this conversation before about. Second uses, converting existing buildings, existing physical plants from one use to another. And the thing I worry about, for example, is a motel gets converted to a drug and alcohol rehab place. I mean, this is the type of thing that we've seen so much of in this area, and it just doesn't seem to work. We've got churches that move into, you know, beer wholesalers and old bar and grills, and that sort of thing. So, I mean, it's just, this is the kind of thing, I think, I've said this many times before in our public meetings. Um, but I'm just saying it again, and that's one of my worries about this type of.
Well, just, uh, so you'll know, I mean, we don't consider everything perfect in this, uh, there, there are problems, and. Uh, we are even, uh, thinking of, uh, an amendment which would include some more property in this area. Uh, within a couple of months, we can't cure a few things that, uh, which we're still kind of, uh. Either not addressed or not addressed for, so we can always take it, so, and you can find in condition.
And, and that was the add a public meeting, uh, and I suggest, if you don't mind, uh, just a, a note to us. With, with that, the major suggestions, okay, just, just both of them.
Absolutely.
We'll have the force, and, and you'll be involved when we get together.
And I'll, I'll copy our chairman's.
And if I made it just further response, and if you try, the minimum lot area for these uses is thirty thousand square feet. So if an acre is around forty-three thousand square, give or take, it's about two-thirds of an acre. And the definition of a rehabilitation facility, out of the box, is defined as a licensed establishment, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm Attorney John Schneider from Milford, and I represent the Cost Trust. I'm here tonight to, because my client just asked me to look at the ordinance. Uh, it, I noticed in that with ability, because that property now is leased to Kramer Shetts on two or one.
Right.
And has been for a number of years, and it's about eleven acres of commercial, what is more a commercial zone. I note that it says, project must be, consists without limitation, a minimum of two uses, multiple uses. It kinda give me a feel for what you're looking for there, because right now, that building's been there for a long time, what we're suing, etc., but. What do you envision, that you have to have two uses if you're going to develop within that property, or somebody comes in with a project?
I'm gonna, uh, Robert, would you be, uh, Ron, could you possibly address that?
Well, basically, it's, it's sort of a, sort of a mixed-use kind of idea in the sense that. Let's say you have retail at the bottom, and you have apartments at the top, or you have, that's a one building, or as opposed to having two separate uses. On the property, but obviously, the Cost Trust will be grandfathered as to whatever occurs with respect to. Their present use, now that they sell to a new person, eh, okay, then that new person may not necessarily. Be grandfathered for a new use, but let me just see if there's any additional definitions here for. be grandfathered for new use, but let me just see if there's any additional definitions here for how they are defining the uses here.
The, are you, are you still involved with the trust itself then?
It's still titled in the trust.
Yeah.
Yeah, the definitions aren't helping me, just give me a moment and let me see if I can. There's something here. Yeah, I I can't tell you, Attorney Schneider, exactly what may have been envisioned, because this ordinance was developed by a designer. Who was the planner, sir, was a with your office, John, I can't think of her name now. Judy Stern-Goldstein. With the Shane James Engineering Firm, which is John's engineering firm. And again, I I believe it was done to try to allow some additional perhaps, whether it's, we call it thinking out of the box, or just allowing some additional uses along the corridor, to make it more adaptive and more receptive to two thousand and twenty times, if I kind of think, but I can't give you anything more than some abstract, I can.
Well, actually, I think you and I were together several times on this early on, quite a few years ago.
Well, but I would also like to thank the township, the zoning officer, the secretary.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
I'd like to thank the township, the secretary, the zoning officer immediately gave me stuff to look at. As I reviewed it, I already told my client, I thought it was a big step forward for the township. Looking at that particular property, I love the incentivized development option talks about encouraging infill development, adaptive use of older buildings, and mixed use development for incentivizing business to open that.
I'm sorry, Mr. Schneider, I still can't hear you.
If you want to come a couple of feet closer.
Thank you.
I was just saying that the the incentivized development option, B that you have here, encouraging infill development and adaptive for use of older buildings, would be applicable to a project like this, and would give a person looking at the building the opportunity to think in terms of what they could expand it to. I also like the idea of streamlining the project approval process, of being able to file, you know, preliminaries and final at the same time and so forth. So I think it's a, I think it's a, you know, good old, good old, good old, you guys have spent a lot of time working on. I will have to find out what mixed uses, because there's so many good uses that you have now, that it may be that on eleven acres, you'd only want to do one use. Because, you know, you have a, you've got a lot of uses in there, so you could just sandwich another one in ad hoc.
I don't think the intention of the ordinance is to mandate two uses. I think it's to include, you know, be inclusive, but not necessarily prohibitive.
But it, I mean, actually, right now, though, it says it's without limitation, a minimum of two uses, so it seems like it shall be, whereas it can't. But I just, I raised that issue because I think it might deter from some of the things you're trying to accomplish.
Well, thank you very much.
Certainly duly noted, thank you very much. And we are, yes, sir.
Said I'll put a point on it. Hey, Donna, Scott Amore.
Hey, Scott, thank you.
You're welcome.
Donna, can you hear Scott?
Oh, I can, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we were just in a deposition yesterday, we're good. For everybody that's here that's seeing this, what you're seeing is the tail end, as as Brian said, of three years or so, maybe a little more of work, and not just three years of work. What I can say is this, the last time this township looked at its commercial zone was when my father was the chair of the planning commission, that I am now the chair of, in the mid nineteen seventy. And at this time, the world has changed. The uses have changed, the nature of redevelopment has changed. And it was time to do something to hopefully set conditions to allow some redevelopment along what is basically our free roadway triangle of most of our commercial development. And what is particularly good about this is that not only is it a planning commission generated, it wasn't just. It's also not just the people you're seeing here, because when we started this process, I'm not sure, two of the three supervisors were already on the board, were you on the board, Robert? At the beginning of this?
I can never.
Right, and right, but the thing is that we've had planning commission members come and go, and we've had some supervisors come and go. All of whom, though, have looked at this project, that it's time to do something. There is nothing like this. Not just in Monroe, there, there's nothing like the way we're doing this. And as far as I know, in most of the northeastern part of the state. All right, you might get, you'll get vestiges of this in southeastern Pennsylvania, some of the redevelopment of some of the the ugly suburban sprawl in the southeastern corner, you know, Bucks and Montgomery. But this is an opportunity to do something where we still have some both open spaces and frankly, some pretty damn ugly blighted stuff that we all drive by every single day. I will say this, in this room, we have probably some tremendous differences and many other things. I find it heartening that on this particular thing, we seem to not have nearly the minute, we knew we needed to get to a goal. What you've seen here is the end result of this goal. Guys, I'm going to say, thank you, and to whoever's behind, if 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 any of the former ones are still on it, hey, I'll also say, I'll also say thank you, because the planning commission, we pushed this, we pushed, we pushed to have money spent on not one, but two consultants who truly helped guide it, in addition to our township professionals that we already had. So I'm glad we're here. Far as I'm concerned, let's have, let's have a vote, and you know, if you build it, let's see what, let's see what comes.
And I think, Scott, Robert said that.
The jury can have a case now.
Just a couple of months down the road, we're going to sit back down, and we're going to look at some other.
I'm sure we will.
I live in document.
And we'll all be on there, and we'll all be, you know, we'll come back with the planning commission. It's been nice, you guys have said, you know, when we said we need some consultants, you you put some money out for for some consultants. This was, this was a good, this is a good piece, like I said, nobody, nobody else has it like this. So, anyway, that's my, that's my two cents.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you very much. Okay, anyone else here at hand that'd like to comment? And.
Yeah, there, we have numerous guests online, so if anyone would like to be recognized, I suppose you can raise your hand or or just unmute yourself, just make sure only one person speaks at a time.
Yes, could I ask a question, please?
Sure, and you are?
Yes, my name is Tom Guard.
I, he's logged in Tammy Guard.
Okay.
Quick question. Yes, I'm a taxpayer and resident. Question, an existing residential use in the new zone, that would be grandfathered and remain unchanged?
Yes.
Thank you for verifying that.
This is Marshall Anders, can you hear me?
Yes, Marshall, thank you.
Okay. With regard to what was said earlier about the facility in Delaware Water Gap, it is not a drug and rehab facility, it is a residential facility. And yes, there have been complaints made about it, because I represent somebody that's made a complaint about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, would you like to speak?
Okay, if that's the case, we'll look to.
Yeah, I'll move that we close the public hearing at seven forty-three.
So second motion, all in favor.
All right.
All right.
All right.
Now, we have the option, of course, of of moving on, and we have so many days, I forget what the clock is, forty-five days, whatever. I don't know that that's the case. And having said that, I'm going to make a motion now that we do approve this amendment to our ordinance, our ordinance two thirty-seven amended, chapter twenty-seven.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Done.
Done. Done at last. Okay.
Do we need Donna anymore?
No, I I think we're, we're in pretty good shape here. Donna, thank you so much, and we'll look forward to getting your transcript, and we'll go from there.
And let me know if you need me to send you a recording of that that portion, I I can do so.
Okay, thank you.
Donna, do you want the, do you want the exhibits, or should I keep them like we normally do?
Uh, yeah, we can just keep them as we normally do. The other option is you can email them to me, and then I can copy them and attach them to the transcript, but either way is fine with me.
Well, I'll email them to you, so your document is complete, you don't necessarily have to attach them to the transcript, but I'd like to have your file complete in case there's, you know, issue or something.
Sure, that sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
All right.
Good night.
Good night, Donna.
You too.
Good night.
Bye-bye.
Okay. Next thing on our agenda, yes, sir.
That's an interesting pen. That pen looks like a massive pen or something.
Hey, thanks.
Godfather. Our godfather is here, we'll see you guys.
See you Thursday. Well.
At this, at this point, do we need Ken to stay to answer questions, or are we good to go?
I think you're good to go, looking at what we have left on the Kettle Creek, you want to be involved in that. And the only two things we have, thank you very much for being here.
Thanks, Ken. I, it will be after today. Yep, and.
It's a hundred percent correlation, this email, what was in C one four is now in E.
One hundred percent. No, nobody was taking that, and if you'd like, sir, I can email you a copy of the map, if you want to give me your email address. Fantastic. Thank you. Yeah, it hasn't changed since September. Yeah, tomorrow, I'll, I'll tell the planning commission it was adopted and then get it, so it just says official map.
Okay.
It could be close, though.
Okay, um, yeah, because there's a note around the sun, I've called it twice, didn't get any.
And it's still.
Uh, well, we mailed to everything that was posted, so Ken, the list that Ken used is the same one I used for the mail.
Well, there's quite a few.
Yes.
We have, that's going to be.
Yes.
We have activity going on towards the air.
Oh, I, we thought that was the law.
And just here and there, there's just, it seems to be on an update. So we're not going to work, we have heard Smithfield Township.
Well, he certainly did, he he has a list with the time that he posted all.
Keep it on our site.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
It's about three hundred and fifty to four hundred properties that he had to post in in a matter of, you know, and he did it on, he he got done like more than a week ago.
Yeah, he did. He had to put a, 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 a light on his, on his vehicle, so he wouldn't get killed. All right, so, having said that, Kettle Creek, if you get a chance to look at it, we do give money, we contribute to Kettle Creek.
A very good cause.
It is, it's true, yes. And what happened was they had to cancel their their major fundraiser, and that's the dinner.
Right.
The annual dinner, that would actually is 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 a good opportunity to go and and meet some really good people and learn a lot about what they do. But having said that, would a nominal amount?
How much?
Yeah.
Currently, you put in the budget for a donation of a thousand dollars.
Okay, so that's that's substantial, and on our budget, and 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 that might be one of the highest ones. So maybe two fifty?
Four hundred and fifty?
Two hundred and fifty dollars?
This is a very good cause.
I'll go five hundred, yeah.
Do we know what we've given thus far?
Yeah.
Um, according to this, which was printed out.
Twelve thousand.
Yeah, I think we made the contributions soon.
This is showing that it is out of date, so if you've made contributions this year, I don't have.
Right, I think my guess, because I I believe we approved the charitable nonprofit contributions earlier, so I think a number like two hundred and fifty would be perfectly fine.
All right, so it's three hundred dollars, so if the minutes reflected, it's three hundred dollars.
Okay, do you want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion. I have a second, maybe.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, great, thank you.
Wait, hold on, hold on, we need a vote. We need a vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How much was it?
Three hundred.
And last but not least, at least, is is the award, to consider rewarding the bid, Robert, for the the park fishing doc project.
John, I I just have some questions that the bid proposal, some of the figures were different than what the engineer's estimate might have been, I mean, do you think that some of these were were too low, because we're in an area where we could certainly, if we had to, increase a few of these figures, it wouldn't hurt us, because we're still well within what the grant was, so.
So if I may, Robert, if I can open to this, we're actually not. I ran the numbers earlier, and while the original bid estimate for the accessible path came in at that fifteen thousand number, that seemed very low to us. Going back to the original application that we filed in twenty eighteen, so Shane James actually hit the mark within five thousand dollars of what they thought they were going to, so amazing job there. After that, and after finding those numbers, I went through our engineering costs at this point. Where we are right now, we have less than five thousand dollars left to spend before we hit our cap.
For for engineering?
Uh, for the entire project. Uh, right now, to date, if we do decide to go with pioneer construction and choose to go with base bid plus alternate B at sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars, plus all of the costs for putting the bid together, on going through all of our pending permits, all of that stuff, that came in at ten thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars and seventy-six cents. So feasibly speaking, with those costs, plus if you guys choose to approve this tonight, we'll be at eighty thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars and seventy-six cents out of an eighty-four thousand dollar, eight hundred and eighty dollar grant.
And and the match, the fifteen?
That is including the fifteen percent match.
Takes it into eighty-four thousand.
That's correct.
And we can't avoid that, that's no in-kind service, Robert, check that out, I guess.
Yeah, check that out, but the 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 issue here, it's, as long as we're near the bid limit, we're pretty good, is that we're using this as a match for the DCNR grant, which is the grant for the waterfront renovation and pathways, and the first of our parts, our activities pots in the waterfront park, so that brings up just one issue, two, two issues. The first is, it's just that we're, you're near our limit, because it'll compress what we have to pay in in cash for either grant, so we're pretty good there. But the other thing is, we have yet, that I know, have heard from DCNR, which has to approve the match. So we can, we can approve this bid with the proviso that it's subject to the DCNR approval. That we can do.
Robert, is is Brian on that? Is is?
He is, but some days Brian answers emails, sometimes he doesn't.
And 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 God knows what's going on in Harrisburg, we got a well.
Usually, he says they approve in thirty days, but it's been about thirty days since we asked for approval, so we can approve just subject to that, to DCNR.
Do you see where this is?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, yeah, I, I think you can approve subject to that, and if you get that, you can just notify us and we, we can then issue a notice to proceed, if that's your, or in the meantime, what we can do, we can tell the contractor that, uh, it's being awarded subject to, uh, the DCNR grant, and he can submit his bond work, I mean, I think you're fairly certain that you're going to get it.
Uh, yeah, I, I think it's, it's just kind of a rubber stamp approval.
So, he can go ahead and get his bonds ready and submitted so that once you get it, everything is ready to roll.
By the way, there was one, uh, mistake, I think, on the, on the, uh, the list of requirements. One was an aluminum railing, it's really a wooden railing, but Melissa and I have discussed that, and she says it doesn't make any difference. So, I guess we're okay on that.
You gotta remake a field change.
Well, yeah, that was a, what was not one of the options, A or B?
Yeah, it's bid B, but I guess was left from when we were thinking of doing a whole thing of aluminum or something, whatever.
Well, we, we can make a field change, that's not going to affect as much.
Well, I'll make a motion then, that's all right.
And that motion will be contingent on our getting the.
DC, yeah, the motion to accept the bid, uh, with alternate B, uh, subject to DCNR approval, of this, uh, this bid as a, a match for our DCNR grant.
I'll second the motion.
We need, we need the company names.
It's Pioneer. Pioneer.
Pioneer, oh, yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And they reconfigured the whole damn pier anyway, didn't they? It's going to be, the, the pier itself is not, I always envisioned walking out into the middle of the creek and. It's still going to be a beautiful.
Well, what's a pier walking out into the creek is now kind of a platform looking over the creek.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, then, uh, motion to adjourn this meeting?
Do you want to ask for the public comments for anybody that's left on?
I'm sorry, are there still, are there, any, uh, any public comments, uh, on, on anything that we've covered tonight, any agenda items? If not, then I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Actually, before you go, I do have one more thing. Just to confirm what John needs to do moving forward with the bid, do you want him to reach out to the contractor, ask them to just see forward with the bonding and whatnot? So, as soon as we get the okay, they're good to move forwards? Or do you want to go with the alternate of, so we just have them hold on and sit tight until we get the approval?
I think we should get moving.
Yeah, let, let them start the paperwork.
Let John, let John move forward with it, as he suggested.
Okay, you okay with that?
Yeah, sure.
Fantastic.
Great.
Thank you.
We, we, have we voted to adjourn?
Yes, we did.
Okay, we're done.
We're done.
Yeah, all right, 7:58. I don't know.